All right then. I'd like to call the order of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. It is now 7:00 PM at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. It is Monday, February 3rd, 2014. Roll call.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
All right. Number two is a pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is special orders of day and announcements. We have one, item 3A.
A proclamation recognizing the Beloit International Film Festival, February 14th through 23rd, 2014.
Mr. Vice President.
Whereas the Beloit International Film Festival, BIF, is celebrating its ninth season, February 14th to 23rd, 2014, by expanding to the 10 Days of BIF. And whereas BIF continues to enhance the quality of life in Beloit, bringing visitors and residents together and bringing recognition and praise to our city. And whereas BIF has concentrated all of the film venues in downtown Beloit this year. And whereas this internationally acclaimed festival continues to expand its programming to engage the whole community in its film and musical offerings, including an expanded BIF plus music and the introduction of the Sound of Music sing-along. And whereas this year's honorary chair, Mark Wood, is the world's foremost producer of films for the deaf. And whereas Beloit's business and industry, retail merchants and hotels, and foundations and financial institutions have shown their commitment to the future of BIF with their financial support. And whereas more than 150 lawmakers, sorry filmmakers, from as far away as South Africa and Korea will be here to present 120 outstanding films, documentaries, features, and short films in 10 venues. And whereas BIF has continued its important mission of educating future film audiences by bringing thousands of schoolchildren together to learn critical viewing and production skills. And whereas BIF has continued its important mission of, and whereas BIF has launched the BIF founders and the Film Society of Beloit, allowing citizens to compliment the generosity and support provided by the Hendrix Group, Visit Beloit, and Beloit College. Now therefore, the president of the Beloit City Council hereby honors the organizers, sponsors, and more than 400 volunteers that contribute to the success of BIF, declares February 14th to 23rd, 2014 to be Beloit International Film Festival, week and a half, and urges all citizens to enjoy these programs and extend the welcome of our community to the thousands of filmmakers and visitors to Beloit, presented this third day of February 2014.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board of directors of BIF, thank you very much, and we are looking forward to our first year of expanded of the 10-day festival, and we hope that all of you will join us. Thank you.
Item number four would be public hearings, but we have none tonight, so we move on to item five, which is citizens' participation. We have reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may become before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer the speaker to staff or assistants. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from public attacks of any, personal attacks of any kind. I don't have any sheets indicating that anyone wishes to speak, but if you do wish to come forward and speak under citizens' participation, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Just a question or two regarding the item 7A, the alcohol consumption in public facilities. I'm just wondering, in granting a permission for something like this, would this be setting a precedent for expanded use of public facilities for alcohol use? And also the question, when we do grant permission for alcohol use in public facilities, the monitoring of those is very difficult with the free flow of personnel into venues such as that. It's very difficult to monitor those who may be under the legal age of drinking. So I'd ask you to consider very cautiously when that item is concerned or taking up those questions. Thank you.
Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item five? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item, under citizens' participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation. We'll move on to the consent agenda and item six. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered routine and be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Counselor DeForest, did you have something that you wished to remove from the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that item 6D, as in dog, be removed, please.
Okay. All right then. Any other councilors wish to remove something from the consent agenda? Hearing none, item, consent agenda consists of items 8A through 8C and item 6E.
Motion for approval.
Moved by Lubke, seconded by Kincaid. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Item 6D.
An application for a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district classification of the property located at 2508 Milwaukee Road from C1 Office District to PLI Public Lands and Institutions District. This is a referral to the plan commission.
All right. Do we have a staff report? Mr. Pennington.
Good evening. This is a referral of a zoning action. This is the fourth and final piece that is part of the proposed new intermediate school on Milwaukee Road. Unlike the prior pieces, it does not have a comprehensive plan change because that was already completed during the prior phase. When the district initially proposed three properties, that left one triangular piece between the school site and the church site. We felt it was inevitable that that would eventually be an institutional use there and change the plan at that time. So this is the final piece. My understanding that is that the owners have sold it to the district, so it's now being incorporated into the school campus.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. That was the, I know this is referred to plan, and I just wanted to raise my question so that when it came back before us, that staff could be prepared to answer it. So I'm confused about what exact parcel this is. So this is the parcel where there's a home currently, but you're saying that the homeowner has sold their property already?
Correct.
Because before, we had been careful about how we zoned it to protect that homeowner if they wanted to retain their property?
Exactly.
Okay.
So they, they were aware of the plan change and actually were fine with that.
Okay.
At some point, conversations were initiated between the district and the homeowner, and the property has been sold.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
Do we have a motion to approve 60?
Motion for approval, 6D.
I'll second.
Counselor Vanda Bogart, and seconded by Counselor DeForest. All in favor of approving item 6D, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Now we'll move on to item seven, is ordinances, 7A.
A proposed ordinance to amend section 15.06 sub 4 sub B1 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to alcohol consumption and possession on streets and other public places.
All right. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter is before you at the request of the library board. It's my understanding that they desire specifically to celebrate the fifth anniversary of the opening of the building. I think it's also in conjunction with National Library Week sometime in April. The ordinance would allow the sale and consumption of fermented malt beverage, basically beer and wine, on three different occasions annually at the library. The ordinance would limit the sale and consumption to being inside the library and would also limit the sponsorship of any such events to either the Friends at the Beloit Library or the Beloit Public Library Foundation. Only those two groups could be acceptable as sponsors to the Kirk if a request for that license were made. There's an overarching state statute that says if, if an entity obtains such a permit, the facility that is hosting the event cannot be open for other business. In this case, the business, the library, would be normal library operation. So during any one of these events, the library would have to be closed to normal library usage and reopened for the attendees at the event. I believe, well, I know we have Jenny Schamber and Jennifer Latt's co-direct, co-department heads at the library with us tonight, and I think we also have some members of both the Friends Group and the Foundation and the Board. I'm not exactly, I didn't ask before the meeting, so if there's questions that I can't respond to, I'm sure we could call upon them. But be glad to, I would also mention, without this ordinance, we have a general prohibition against the sale, consumption of alcohol in, on, in public places. There's a number of exceptions in the ordinance. You know, obviously, we make use of the Rotary River Center or allow the public to rent that and have alcohol. Telfer Park, the Snappers, I mean, I could go on down a lengthy list, and this would create a limited exception three times a year for that to occur at the library. But with that, I'll try to respond to questions.
All right. I think, I'd like to go ahead and get this on the floor to begin with. First things first, is, the first thing's up for us is to do a first, first reading, suspend rules. Does we have anybody who wishes to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Now, let's go ahead and have some discussion on this. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I guess I would first begin by asking my colleagues not to suspend the rules to allow us the due process of this ordinance change, so people have a chance to digest it and talk about it and come before us if they wish to. I do, I do have one question about the library closure. I wanted to check to see, I don't know if someone can answer that, maybe one of the co-department heads. Would the library's hours be shortened to accommodate an event? I just wanted to make sure that the library wouldn't close earlier than its normal operating hours to accommodate one of these events. Thank you.
The event that's currently being planned would be held on a Saturday evening. The library closes at 5:30. The event would start at 7:00.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, so just to be clear, Attorney Casper said that there's the understanding that the library would have to be completely closed before an event where liquor was served, where alcohol was served, could, could open and have attendees, so.
Right. And that would be so that we could obviously clear the building before the event starts, so that it would just be open to the people attending the event.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. And then, I also have a comment, I, to my colleagues, since we have this ordinance before us, I would like to have discussion, and I would like to propose a motion that we amend this ordinance right now, since we have it before us and we're dealing with this ordinance, that we would strike the MDA tub run fundraiser as one of the items listed in this ordinance as an exception to allowing the sale of alcohol in a public place. I feel, I want to separate, I don't want to confuse that with the library, but I think that since this ordinance is before us and we have the opportunity to address it, I would like to make that, that motion.
Procedurally, I think we'd like to go ahead and, and deal with the suspension of the rules since that's on the floor, and then if we decide to opt to, you know, however we do this, then we'll, you know, deal with amendments to that ordinance. I believe that's probably procedurally more correct at this point.
That sounds fine.
Counselor Lubke.
I wanted to more or less address Mr. Fruzen, who had asked a question before, and just reassure him that there is, there'll be a possible police presence, there'll be security, there'll be IDs checked. We've had this before, and I think one of the, as I look over and think of the prime examples, probably the Friday nights, not Fridays in the park, but that's in the afternoon, but the, the evening dances all summer long. I went to every one, and alcohol served there, I think by the Knights of Columbus and other organizations. And I didn't notice any problems with, with alcohol consumption or minors or whatever because of the supervision and the adults who attend that checking IDs or whatever. So I guess I, what I want, and I put some notes here, there's plenty of supervision or there must be in order for this, for them to have this, and minors would not be served, IDs would be checked. So, you know, I share your concerns, but every time we've had this before, we just have not had a problem because the adults who assume this responsibility take it very seriously and, and monitor because they don't want to lose the chance for doing this in the future. Thank you, Mr. Fruzen.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on? Mr. Vice President.
I guess my only question would be, I'm comfortable with where we're at on the library piece. If we're going to use this as a vehicle to change the tub run, I think we should not suspend the rules. I guess my question to my colleagues is, are there others who are interested in doing that? And if so, then I would vote against suspending the rules. If there's not interest in doing that, then I think we could dispose of this tonight.
Okay. I think I understand. I think, given how that, everyone feels about it, and I know where they're at, if they've, you know, will, I will move, vote to suspend the rules, and if, of course, that requires a supermajority, there'll have to be at least five of us in agreement to do that. Do we have any other questions on suspending the rules? Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I do, I guess one statement related to that, because I do want to be fair and give the opportunity for those affected by this decision, my amendment to strike the MDA tub run, the opportunity to come to speak with us. You know, I'm wondering if possibly my colleagues would be so inclined to suspend the rules, redraft, consider redrafting this ordinance to exclude the MDA tub run, and then bring it back to us for discussion at that point and a vote on, on it at that point as a, as a vehicle for us discussing it. I don't know if I'm making sense. I want to be fair to all involved, to make sure they have the chance to express themselves. So that's what I would suggest. I'd be willing to withdraw my amendment and just ask the staff if they would be willing to consider redrafting this ordinance.
Counselor Spritzer.
Not sure I'm following procedurally. Are we suggesting that we vote on the library piece tonight and ask staff to bring forward a separate change regarding the tub run?
No, I am suggesting that we, we not suspend the rules, allow this to come back for a second time, so that we have the opportunity to talk about the ordinance as it relates to the MDA tub run.
You're simply imploring the rest of us to go ahead and agree to not suspend the rules? Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
All right then. Counselor Levy.
So a point of clarification then, so Counselor DeForest, are you saying, when you want staff to bring this back to us, are you saying, bring it back without the tub run? So in essence, you're asking staff to just redo a whole ordinance? So should we even, if that's the case, you're asking us not to vote on this one at all tonight, just bring back a whole another ordinance? I think in simplified terms, that's what you're saying.
That's correct.
And what is your opposition of, what's the purpose behind that? I'm just curious.
For, for moving the MDA tub run?
Yes.
I have two reasons. One is that it's listed in here as an annual event to take place as an exception and has not been an annual event. We did not have a tub run last year. As far as I know, it's not in the plans for this year, so I don't think it makes sense to list it as an annual exception. Secondly, I have personal objections to allowing the sale of alcohol at the MDA tub run where the downtown is blocked off and alcohol is served to people who are getting off of their motorcycles, drinking, and then getting back on their motorcycles on their way to their next destination. To me, it encourages drinking and driving. We're not the first stop on the way. Who knows how many stops they've had before they get to Beloit. I don't know how many drinks have been consumed before they get to Beloit, and then to encourage them to drink more alcohol, to turn around and get back on their bikes to go on to their next stop, to me is not, to me, I don't want to encourage, I don't think that sets a good precedent for our community that we're encouraging drinking and driving.
Well, I can understand your position on that. However, I mean, well, let's, I understand, you know, if you wish to make an amendment at some point after, first things first, let's talk about it, let's go ahead and vote on the suspension of the rules. If that's sustained, then we, then we can go ahead and discuss the ordinance as a whole because we are bringing it up, even though we're making this, this one change, the whole ordinance is coming before us. So I, I understand, we're just making those, having those discussions. First things first, do we have any other questions or comments on suspension of the rules at this point? I think we've kind of talked that to death. All right then. I'll call the suspension of the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. We've, we have determined not to suspend the rules. There was two affirmative votes and five against. So now, do we have, you did want to make an amendment?
No, I, I would just ask the staff to redraft the ordinance. Is that appropriate? Because then we could have discussion about it at that point, or?
I, I think if you're requesting that we redraft the ordinance, you should make a motion to amend, and with what your request is, and then we can bring a substitute amendment back to the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
If, if your amendment's sustained, then, then at that point, we, you know, they'd bring this a substitute amendment back.
So I, I guess I'm wondering, though, if I should wait to make that amendment at the second reading, so that people who want to speak for or against it would have the opportunity to do so.
Well, we wouldn't be approving it tonight. So if you, if you amended it, then, you know, that would be, get a chance for people to look at the amended, at that amendment and make that a comment on the next, next meeting.
Also, my office will contact the MDA individuals organizing the event to see if they plan on coming back and just inform them, you know, if your motion is sustained tonight, inform them that the council will take up this matter at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. That sounds fair. Thank you. So yes, I would like to make a motion to remove the MDA tub run fundraiser as one of the exceptions listed under this section of ordinance.
Right. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Levy, Counselor Vanda Bogart.
I think we're premature in our discussion of this motion to amend and delete the tub run concept. We don't know whether they're coming back this year. We know that they didn't last year. We don't know if they're coming back next year. We do know they changed the route from year to year. We don't know whether there were any issues or problems when they were here before. I hadn't heard of any. I share a general skepticism, I guess that's the best word I can think of, and the general assumption that everyone seems to make, whether it's the library, or whether it's the, Visit Beloit, or whether it's the tub run, or, you know, you go down the list, that to have a successful event, we have to have alcohol. Whether it loosens the, the wallet for the silent auction at this function or that function, or whether it allows the people who are on the street at the tub run to have a more fun time, we assume that if alcohol is involved, that it will be more successful. I don't know that that's a correct assumption. However, I don't know that my personal dis, my, my personal level of discomfort means that I should impose that will on other people. I think we're premature on Counselor DeForest's motion and second. We don't know if there was an issue with us in our community. To take it out without that piece of information seems premature to me. I would certainly think that we could ask the staff soon or at the next meeting to give us an, an update on what it was like, and so we have an informational basis on which to make a judgment. But, but right now, I will vote against the amendment.
Counselor Lubke.
I too am concerned about the cherry picking and the prejudice we're showing towards one group. We're assuming that they're coming to drink or whatever. I think all of us unanimously, all seven of us are against drinking and driving, but to make that assumption and to act on that is a dangerous thing also. And the bikers I know realize if they're going to bike around southern Wisconsin in the heat and stuff, they can't drink. And many want to enjoy their fun and go about it, so they, they save their drinking until they're done or whatever. But we just, we just made a leap there to, to vote on something that we, because we assumed. So that's why I, I voted for suspending the rules. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this amendment? All right, I'll call and, I'll call the matter. All in favor of approving this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So that was Counselor DeForest, Counselor Kincaid, did you vote, vote for this amendment? And Counselor Spritzer and Counselor Levy? So that would make it four, four affirmatives and three opposed to the amendment. That amendment passes. Do we have any other amendments before we make a motion to lay over?
Can you repeat that, please?
What's that? We have.
Counselors DeForest, Kincaid, Spritzer, and Levy voted in favor of the amendment, and Counselors Haynes, Lubke, and Vanda Bogart voted against the amendment.
So it passed by a vote of four to three.
I would, Mr. President, still ask the staff to give us a report at our next meeting as to the action or activity, whether there were or weren't problems with the tub run when they did have it.
Okay.
So we're not making a decision in the dark.
All right. Do you have, did you contest that on and get that done for us?
Do you mean specifically police presence, or, I mean, I, I can't go back to 2012 and know what happened, so what specifically are you looking for from staff?
Go ahead. I've got you, I still got your.
Well, a police report, were there arrests, were there, were there public urination, were people fighting or puking or crashing bikes, or, you know, on and on, that sort of thing. I guess police presence would be, or police reports would be the biggest thing.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counsel Levy.
I would also ask why the police is gathering that information if the chief could weigh in on the police department's opinion of this, because they're going to be the ones that has to patrol this entire event.
Okay.
So I guess I would like to hear, and I'm sorry, Chief, if I'm putting you on the spot, but I guess I would like to hear what, what the police is thinking about, you know, this event as well.
Okay. He's got till the next meeting to do so. All right. Do we have any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to lay this over?
So move.
Moved by Spritzer.
Second.
Seconded by DeForest. All in favor of laying this over, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've laid it over by a vote of seven to zero. Move on to item 7B.
A proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate section 15.07 sub 5 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to bow and arrow use in the City of Beloit.
Do you feel a little bit like you're northern Wisconsin rather than south central Wisconsin? Alcohol to weapons. 2013 Wisconsin Act 71 removes local government control over the use of bows and arrows and crossbows in their, in your jurisdictions, except where it involves the health and safety of the community. So basically, we don't have any restrictions on that right now, so that's why we're asking So basically, we don't have any restrictions on that right now, so that's why we're asking you to act on this ordinance that Beth Kruger put together over the last two weeks, which prohibits a number of things, a number of things that we can prohibit in the city jurisdiction. And that includes using a bow and arrow within 100 yards of a building that can be occupied. It includes having permission to hunt on property and follow all of the same rules that bow hunters have to follow now. And we're also asking that you act quickly on this because we don't have an ordinance because of the state act that prohibited us from imposing certain restrictions. So that's why we're asking you to have a second reading tonight, this ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Spritzer, seconded by DeForest. Any questions or comments on suspending the rules? Hearing that, I'll call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Suspended the rules by a vote of seven to zero. Do we have a motion on the underlying matter?
Move approval.
Moved by Spritzer, seconded by Lupke, Council Kincaid.
I would like to ask our council a couple of questions on this. Does the state statute address the problem or issue of arrows going onto someone else's property and then the, and trying to retrieve it? Would that be trespassing? Would the arrows going past the windows of a building, which are maybe over 100 yards away, would that be a violation of any air rights that we have in the state? Could you address maybe this as briefly as you can, perhaps?
Thank you. Well, given the scope of my knowledge, it'll be by necessity brief. The statute is silent. It merely was an addition prohibiting the local government from enacting or adopting a restriction prohibiting a person from hunting with a bow and arrow or crossbow within their jurisdiction. Then it carved out a few exceptions, including you could restrict the discharge to, to make it only occur toward the ground, and limit it to a specified distance not to exceed 100 yards. You could make the restriction lesser if it was your pleasure, 50 yards, 25 yards, something like that. The staff even, I wasn't intimately involved in the drafting. That was Ms. Krieger and I think Tom Deputy Chief Duncan from PD, and they thought that it would be wise to propose the maximum allowed by the statute, the 100 yards. But as far as the trespass or the air rights issues, I think those would have to be addressed under common law, civil law, and I think that would get into a rather long-winded answer if I tried to address all of that.
Thank you. I do have another question. In drafting our ordinance, why haven't we, why aren't we being as restrictive as the state statute would allow?
We are.
We are.
It says we can, we can set a distance not to exceed 100 yards, so we couldn't say, we couldn't prohibit you for 200 yards. We could go less, but not more. And we've gone with the maximum allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Vanda Bogart.
How are we going to enforce the concept of shooting an arrow toward the ground? How are we going to know? It's going to hit within a moment or two with gravity, but how are we going to deal with that?
You always come up with good questions, and the answer to that is, one is we're going to work with our partners in the Department of Natural Resources who actually do this type of work and patrol on the outskirts of Beloit, where there's a few properties where it's probably legal to discharge a bow. Technically, what this law infers is that you're supposed to be up above in a tree shooting down. That's the closest I can get to it. Although you might, you might argue that the arrow is going to be going down as soon as it's released, and that fulfills the ordinance, but you should really be hunting up above and shooting down.
A tree stand kind of thing.
Yes. Not American.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
That's inferred.
Okay. Chuck, you hadn't signaled yet, so.
So the aiming to the ground is inferred and not required?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Council DeForest.
Thank you. So for clarification, then, discharge to a target is not allowed? At a target isn't?
If, you would have to have permission, you'd have to have, still have permission from a landowner if you weren't on your own property.
Okay. So you'd have to have permission from neighboring property owners if you're discharging towards a target? Is that the way this reads?
Yes. Because a bow and arrow is considered a firearm also.
Okay.
Under, as long as it was less than 100 yards.
Yes.
Okay.
And it would be an extraordinary bow that could fire farther than that.
Right. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments on this? All right, then. We've, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Appointments, so is item eight. We have none. Number nine is councillor activities and upcoming events. Council DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin by thanking Mr. Paul York for his service to the city. Many of you have probably heard already that he will be moving on to take on a new position. And I just wanted to personally thank you for tolerating my endless questions. I want to thank you for doing such an excellent job overseeing the finances of the city, and we will be missed. So I just wanted to personally thank you for that. And I do appreciate that you always made me feel like no question was too stupid or too minimal, so thank you for that. I genuinely appreciate it. I do want to share that I was able to attend a couple of really fantastic events in the community recently. I was able to attend the open house of the new cancer care center, and that was a wonderful event with great turnout. It's a beautiful facility, another jewel we have in our community that makes Beloit a great place, and that will certainly draw people from the area, from the region, to our community to get the treatment and the care that they need. I would like to thank the Beloit Health System for that investment in our community. And I was also able to attend the Todd School ribbon cutting with several of my colleagues, and that was near and dear to my heart. My children attended Todd School, and it was quite shocking for me to get the tour and see that where my kids went to kindergarten is now the main office, but it's a beautiful facility. I'm so appreciative to Klobuchar for working so hard to get it done on time, to work around the needs of the students and the teachers, and I'm pleased with the brave design for helping to keep the character and integrity of the building. It still feels like, you know, a building with character, and so I appreciate that. Two upcoming things I just would like to emphasize. First is on February 19th, I will be attending another Department of Transportation stakeholders meeting. Again, I've been adamant about attending these meetings and advocating for Beloit, that we do have a construction training site located here in Beloit to serve residents in our area, that they can go through the construction training program that will equip them with the jobs that will be coming with the 3990 expansion, and I will continue to advocate that Beloit is one of those sites. And then finally, I am extremely looking forward to February 22nd, BIF Silent Film Showcase, one of my favorite things of the entire year. Hope to see the community out at that fantastic event as long as, as well as at other BIF film venues. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vanda Bogart.
I also attended the cancer care opening session or open house and the Todd School event. Other than that, it's too cold to do much else, as far as I can tell. But I also want to thank Mr. York for his service. One of the things that stands out to me is that consistently during his tenure, the City of Beloit has received national recognition for the preparation of our budget and the process that we went through in the budget itself. And it's not us patting ourselves on the back for doing a good job, it's a national organization reviewing what we've done and saying, this is the way to do it. And I'm guessing, but that probably had something to do with the fact that he got hired in another location, when you can point to that sort of track record for competency. So thank you, Paul.
Council Kincaid.
I too want to wish Mr. York well in his new endeavor. I think that as we reflect over the last few years and what the city has gone through in trying to balance the budget under the conditions in which it has been done, is certainly, it wasn't exactly seamless, but we did it, and we know who's behind it, Paul, and we thank you for that. I have a feeling that the transition to Manassas is going to be very, very good. It's almost exactly the same size city as Beloit, and if population has anything to do with it, it's a, it's a lock. You're going to do just fine.
Council Lupke.
I'll forego telling about my activities, but just to focus on the important thing of thanking Paul York for the last 10 years of dignified, insightful, knowledgeable, and dedicated service to Beloit. He was a man that did not bring a lot of acclaim to himself by showboating or whatever. He just did a very good job for the community, and I tried to pick out the words, the adjectives that perhaps best describe him. So thank you, Paul, and Godspeed.
Council Spritzer.
I won't repeat everything that's already been said, but I also just wanted to thank Paul York and wish you the very best, and thank you for answering the questions and helping to solve our budget challenges, and best of luck in Virginia.
Council Levy.
Paul Levy? What? Come on, I had to say it every.
You've changed that too long.
No, I want to thank Paul for his services. He's a quiet guy that just gets the job done. And I just remember when he first got here, we had a very interesting council at the time, and I think his first meeting, they raked him over the coals pretty good, and he stuck around. So I want to thank him for his services. But I have to agree with what Jim says, now that the weather is cold here, now he's trying to get out of town, so I don't understand that little piece of it here. But he can't take the cold weather, I guess, as much as we can, so. But I'm sure where, he's going to be successful where he goes. We wish him the best of luck and thank him for his years of services. So thank you.
And I'll put my two cents worth, that's not worth repeating everything, but Paul, our insurmountable losses, Manassas is, you know, intense gains, so be well and know our best hopes go with you. Item 10, the city manager's presentation, we have none. Item 11 is reports from boards and city officers. Item 11A.
A resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Mr. York.
First of all, before we start getting down to the business here, I do certainly appreciate all the comments that each and every one of you made this evening. It's sort of humbling, actually. You know, I come each day and do my job and try to do it the best I can, and if I'm doing a good job, I certainly, you know, want to be appreciated for it, but this sort of surprises me that getting these type of comments from each and every one of you. And, you know, I'd like to thank all the council. You've been great to work with the last 10 years or so. I think we've had an excellent city council since I've been here. A very supportive staff, and I think it's a lot of the things that the city hasn't been able to accomplish the last 10 years certainly is reflective of your gratitude of the staff, the hard work that everybody does here, and your willingness to work with staff. You all have really made our job fairly easy, when you really think about it. And I don't think the city could have accomplished some of the things that we've been able to accomplish the last few years without the support and the dedication of the city council. And for that, you know, I thank the council, not only for myself, but for the rest of the city employees that are here, that you provide the resources and the support that we need to do our jobs each day. And it's very gratifying that we have that support. So thank you very much. I'll certainly miss every one of you. It's been a great run here, great 10 years I've been with Beloit. I'm very much looking forward to heading back toward home, to Virginia, which is where we came from. Most of our family is still back there, so it's going to be nice to be closer to them. And I think the new job will present some unique challenges for me and things that I'm looking forward to doing as far as the tail end of my career. I'm sort of starting to reach that point where the career is at some point going to end, and I think this will give me a unique chance to end that and sort of where I started. So I'm very much looking forward to that. So, but again, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I did talk to my sister-in-law yesterday, and it was 62 degrees in Virginia yesterday. So that's something to look forward to there, too. The resolution that you have before you this evening, declaring our official intent to reimburse ourselves from the proceeds of a borrowing, I'm sure if you recall, you've seen this a number of times in years past, and basically what this is, it's a requirement of the federal treasury regulations that any advance payments that we incur prior to the date that we issue our bonds, if we intend to reimburse ourselves for any of these advances that we've made, we have to make a declaration of that intent, and that's what this resolution does. We typically do this each year before we really get into the spending mode for our capital projects, and all these projects were included in our 2014 capital budget for this year, and were scheduled for debt financing. I do want to point out there's the one item on the cots for the ambulances. You'll note that toward the bottom of the list. If you recall, when we entered into that agreement last summer to purchase those new cots, we indicated at that time that we would include that as part of our financing for this year to pay off the lease purchase arrangement that we entered into with the manufacturer at that time for those cots, and that's, that's what that project there is for, so. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the resolution.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move item 11A.
Second. Moved by Vanda Bogart, seconded by Levy. Do we have any questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing that, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item 11B.
A resolution amending the 2014 capital budget for the acquisition of the Huxter Long Parcels in Tax Increment District 10.
This resolution really is a companion resolution to the resolution you passed about a month ago on the purchase of the Huxter Long property in the Tax Increment District 10. We actually closed on that purchase last week. However, the original resolution that was approved did not provide an amendment to the current the current year budget or an appropriation, and this really is just to complete the loop on the purchase of this property, and to get the budget amendment amended for this year, and also to provide a appropriation for the funds that were used for the purchase last week.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Lupke, seconded by Kincaid. Any questions or comments on this matter? Hearing now, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. And I'd like to take this moment to applaud Mr. York. Is that time to come to DeForest?
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, and we do have one final bit of business, item 12.
I'll move it through, Mr. President.
Second.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Spritzer. All in favor adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.